I'd like to call an award to the President's School Board meeting tonight. I would like to offer your patience while getting to the game second.
Got my mic. First things first. So again, thank you for your patience. Roll call. All members are present. And may we have a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Mr. Roach, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I will open the hearing for comments on the school year 25 budget. Do I need to read the disclaimer that we always read? Yeah, don't talk over three minutes and all that. All right. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on the budget? All right, Ms. Sheets, would you come on up?
Good evening. I'm Toni Sheets. I live in the Jefferson District. I have some questions. I wanted to know, I was very curious, when does Milestone Towers begin making payments for leasing the property on the Culpeper High School campus? And how much rental income does Culpeper County Schools receive from the lease agreement? And is that income already reflected in the 2024-2025 school budget? I know this isn't the time for answers, but I was very curious about that because I didn't see that in the budget, but I don't know. There's also much information regarding the illness and sickness regarded to close proximity to high-frequency radio towers. All students and staff members should be made aware of the dangers of electromagnetic frequencies. And I believe every student and staff member should be provided with an EMF protection device using the money that the school earns in their lease agreement with the company. On Milestone Towers' website, they list several agencies to learn more about the radio frequency and wireless safely. When I look at that, I note that some of those agencies are the same agencies that told us we were going to die from COVID, we were going to die if we didn't get the vaccine, we were going to die if we didn't wear a mask, we were going to die if we didn't social distance. And I think we're finding out that not all of those things were exactly true. So when those are the companies that are telling us that the radio frequencies are completely safe, I think we need to take another look at that and use the money that we earn, that our school system earns from that, to do what it takes to protect our students and staff.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we will close the public hearing. Adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Seven-nothing. We will have Ms. Burnett helping with the awards tonight. We will begin with Tiffany Rostarsky with the All Virginia Choir.
Madam Chair and Dr. Bradz, I'm so excited to be here and our school board members. Thank you for letting us be here tonight to recognize our wonderful All Virginia students. As Fine Arts Coordinator of Culpeper County Public Schools, I'm so excited that we have great representation from both high schools this year, and we're going to recognize our Eastern View High School students. These students have taken many, many hours to learn an art song and to learn Level Four sight reading and to sing this in front of judges. They had to make All District Choir first, and then from All District Choir, they had to try out again to make All State. Our students range in the top 10 of our district, and we are very, very proud of them. So I would like to start with Ms. Nubia Diaz Estrada. You'd come join me. Nubia will be representing Eastern View, here you go, as an Alto I. And she is a wonderful young lady who I've had for four years, senior year, and we've done a lot of shows and a lot of musicals and a lot of choir together, and she has just improved every year. So she is going to be representing Eastern View as Alto I delegate, so Nubia Estrada. Congratulations. Our next person is not here tonight. If you go to Panera after the meeting, please say hello to Ms. Maren March. She's working tonight. Maren has been with me for four years. Again, she's representing Eastern View as a soprano II. She's third chair and has done a great job. And if you want to see her in the musical next week, please come out to Adam's Family. She's one of our main roles, so Maren March. Mr. Diego Estrada. Diego, again, has been in choir for four years. He came to us very shy, and now he's gone from being very shy and timid to being number one tenor in our district. He's worked really, really hard this year, especially on sight reading. I am so proud of you, and he is a senior. And if you guys were here in December, you saw him performing with us here, so. Diego Estrada. Mr. Zachary Harms. Eastern View is fortunate to have not only number one tenor, but also the number two tenor in our district. Zachary made All State last year as a freshman, and he made it this year as a sophomore. He works extremely hard, goes to rehearsal, does sight reading, and picks out very expensive doughnuts, and that's another story. So I am very proud of Mr. Zachary Harms. Playing tonight for Eastern View on the tennis court, Ms. Ava Conway. You guys have probably seen her in many of our musicals. She has made All District Choir alternate Alto I, and we are very proud of Ms. Conway. She's a senior this year and will be leaving us, but she's performed in many of our performances and is just an awesome student, so Ms. Ava Conway. Mr. Eduardo Ortega Aguilera. Eduardo is a senior this year, and he is one of our bases. He's amazing because he works really, really hard and has, this year, he has gotten to be alternative base one for our district. Not only is he an awesome singer, but he's also an awesome leader in our program. He takes three choirs at Eastern View, that's what you can do your senior year. And when he took intro to choir, and he actually serves as a helper to me in teaching, see, I'm tearing up now. He serves as a helper and a mentor to our young men in our choir, and they just adore him. And he has just gotten into Radford University. I'm so proud of you, and I think you're going to do some great things. So Mr. Eduardo Ortega Aguilera. Our last one. Eastern View had a very successful year. Mr. Daniel Montana Reyes. Daniel is a freshman, believe it or not, and he's really accomplished a lot in his less than a year here at Eastern View. He works really, really hard, and he has gone from zero to 60 in sight reading, going from that Level One all the way to a Level Four very quickly. He works and rehearses at home. He comes to rehearsals. He's very dedicated. And you can also find him at the EV Events Team. He's running our soundboard and our new sound system, which is awesome. Come to EV and find out for yourself. Thank you, School Board, for that. And I just want to say, I'm really proud of you, Daniel. You are our base two alternate, and we are so proud of you, and we're expecting great things as we go forward, so congratulations. Can we do a group, guys? Come to this side, guys.
Now, we will have Mr. Burns come to do Culpeper County High Schools.
Good evening, everybody. I would like to just take a moment and thank you for allowing this time to recognize our students for the accomplishments that they have all done. So the first student I would like to recognize is Audrey Mangampat. Audrey, you know, I've only been here since last November, so not all of my students I've gotten to know since freshman year, but Audrey was a sophomore when I got here last year. And in the past year and a half I've been here, I've seen a ton of growth in terms of her overall confidence and just abilities in the classroom, and I think that is reflected clearly here. So Audrey auditioned this year for All Virginia and actually got top-chair soprano II at the event, so the top soprano II in all of District 13, so. The other student I'll be presenting an award to is Tim Winchell. So Tim was a part of the group of freshmen that I got to have in my intro class last year. When Tim got to the class, he didn't really talk. I think he sat there with his hood up and had to be reminded to take it off. I don't think, Tim, you knew how to read music last year, but over the past year, you've made a ton of progress and you really have found something you're passionate about, and I'm really, really proud of you. So this year, Tim auditioned for All District for his first time, made it, auditioned for States, and got alternate. So really, really proud of you, and great things are coming.
All right, at this time, Mr. Roach will award the All Virginia Band and Orchestra students.
All right, good evening, and thank you to the board for recognizing these students this evening. We have two All Virginia Band and Orchestra students to recognize from Eastern View this evening. One earned high placement into All District Band and thus earned an All State Audition. Another earned high placement in Senior Regional Orchestra and thus earned an Audition. These auditions took place at JMU the last Saturday in February. Very strenuous auditions, and these guys made it in. First up, we'll go with Ian Larkin. And Ian earned, once again, first-chair All State Orchestra, definitively defending his title as top trumpet player in the state. He is missing an American Youth Philharmonic rehearsal to be here this evening, so we thank him for doing that. Again, as I mentioned, the last time that we were up here to list all of his accomplishments as a trumpet player, we don't have enough time this evening. It's quite astounding. And next up, Mr. Jack Steisler.
All right, sorry I jumped the gun. The next up is Jack Steislinger. Come on down. He earned 11th-chair clarinet in All State Symphonic Band, which is the top group. He is one of our composers-in-residence at Eastern View. If you come out to our spring concert on May 2nd, we will be premiering one of his pieces onstage at Eastern View. Hopefully, I believe you'll be conducting, that's the plan anyway, conducting his world premiere of Fanfare for Band dedicated to Eastern View. And these two will be performing, participating in and performing with the All State Band and Orchestra ensembles on April 18th through the 20th in Richmond, so we're very happy to have them up here and be recognized this evening.
At this time, we will recognize Mr. Taylor, who will do the wrestling, Virginia High School League State Wrestling winners.
Yeah, so everybody else is thanking you guys. Thank you very much for allowing us to recognize these young folks. It's very important that our young folks get to be honored in like this setting in the community, I believe. So thank you so much for setting aside this time. It's very important. Thank you. The first up, we have Mr. Brett Cladaball. Mr. Brett, Mr. Cladaball, this is going to be his third time being recognized in this room. And he's a very special young man. Many of you may know he's a football star outside of being a wrestling star, and this is his third time being a state champ. He'll join one other wrestler with EV to accomplish that task, but a three-time state champ, Brett Cladaball. All right, next up is Kayden Smoot. Kayden Smoot is, this is his fourth time being recognized in this room. And is also a state champion this year. Very proud of this young man, the hard work that he puts in practice and then outside of practice, working hard on his own. Very proud of Kayden Smoot. All right, next up is none other than Elijah Smoot. This young man actually missed most of the season due to injuries, a back injury and then a knee injury, so missed a month of practice, but still somehow came out on top for me anyways, placing third in the state. And I'm very proud of his focus and his dedication to hard work. Elijah Smoot. We have one young man that's not here tonight. He's actually with a sport, a different sport, I believe lacrosse, that's it. I don't want to mess it up or get in trouble. Field hockey lacrosse. But yes, he's, don't tell, but yes, so he's doing that tonight, and I'll make sure he receives this, so.
At this time, we will have Mr. Constas come and do the wrestling for CCHS.
Thank you again, everybody, for being able to honor these children and these young adults. It's really, it's, you know, months and months worth of hard work and everything, and it's just a pleasure to be able to come up here and show some appreciation for all that they've done. So our third-place winner this year for VHSL Wrestling is Allison Gavorette. So real quick, women's wrestling, if you don't know, is on the verge of being sanctioned here in Virginia as a completely separate sport. It is actually the fastest-growing sport at the collegiate level for women athletes as well, across the NCAA and the NAIA level. And Allison is one of many of the 408 girls that participated in the combined state tournament this year. So much so that last year's tournament was only 270, and this year we had 408 participants in the state tournament. So a tremendous amount of growth that's coming through in the state as it's growing as its popularity. So Allison, specifically to talk about her, because she's very nervous and I know she doesn't want to be up here, is really only a first-year wrestler and has come in and only lost to one person in the entire state this entire year. And it always seemed to be the same girl at the same tournaments that we always achieved and went to, and you always ended up in decent friends with her, actually at this point now, you know, because of just the amount of talent that you both have. So Allison, a tremendous showing for your first year of wrestling, and she's only a junior, so you have a chance to be a state champ next year. Your opponent is gone, is graduating, so.
There you go.
The one person you had to beat has now graduated, so. But a tremendous season and an amazing representative of CCHS and women's wrestling in general.
At this time, we will honor the indoor track with Mr. Dennis.
I'm going to do that one last. All right, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for recognizing these wonderful athletes again. I'm going to start off with our third-place finisher, Hunter Moore. So Hunter ran for us as a freshman, and then he did not run his sophomore year. Somehow got him to come back last year. He ended up becoming a jumper. He ran distance when he was a freshman, became a jumper, jumped 41 feet as a junior, jumped 42 feet going into the state meet. He was ranked 12th, finished third, PR'd by Over a Foot. And he also had the flu while he did it. He couldn't even talk, so he would come over to me and be like, "What did I do wrong?" So he's the MJ of the team this year. I call him Flu Game. So Hunter Moore, yeah, great season. He will also be competing at the next level. I was happy to find that out at York College doing soccer and track. All right, our second-place finisher, Carly Layden. Carly has had a strenuous career, going through injuries and things of that nature. She dealing with a little back injury right now. I felt like Coach Taylor, a lot of stuff that you said, I feel exactly the same. She was winning until the last round of long jump. Two girls ended up beating her, and then her last jump, she was like, "It hurts to walk." And I was like, "Still got top three." She was like, "I'mma jump." She got second, so. Her second-best jump ever. So once she's actually healed up, I can't wait to see what she does outdoor. She'll be going to Germana to finish up her associates, and then she'll go jump at Avery University and become a pilot and break all their jumper records there, so. Carly Layden. All right, Teresa, come on. She's been here a lot. I feel like I don't even need to say anything. It's kind of like Brett's. You already know who they are. So this was her sixth state championship. She has not lost a VHSL meet since February of 2021. So it's been a long time. She has the top 20 throws in school history. Every throw that she had this year is in the top 10. She's dominant, and she just signed to UVA, so that's where she'll be for the next four years. Nothing else left to say. She's like the greatest of all time. So Teresa Breckley, state champion again.
All right, Coach Keach. Oh, okay. All righty. All right, that was it. All right, the, we will take just a minute to let people, if they want to leave, leave. But before you move, we got thanked a lot for what we did. We don't do anything in comparison, and I believe I speak for all the board on this. The sponsors who put in all this time and all this effort to see these children do this well need to be awarded some type of applause or thank you or something else because you have helped us with these children. And it is awesome. From fine arts to sports, great job. Thank you. And now, if you need to leave, you can leave. We seem to be in the arrangement of a church. I welcome all of you to come forward if you'd like, or as in church, you can just sit right there too. Our report on CMS is next with Mr. Blackburn. Thank you, Jesse.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Bradz. Thank you all for the support that you give to our students, staff, and families of Culpeper County every day. I'd also like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to present on behalf of my students this evening. Over the past month, with the help of our ITRT, Tim McGuire, and our drama teacher, Ken Wayne, our students were able to collect the pictures and video clips you're about to see. And they were then able to piece together and develop a newscast which focuses on inclusivity and what it means for them to be a CMS Cougar. So with that being said, Ms. Jameson?
Good evening, school board members. I'm Sebastian Winkie.
And I'm Ellie Boeller.
And tonight, we have a presentation for you that I like to call "All About Me."
Sebastian, this presentation isn't all about you. It's about all the students at CMS and why we're proud to be Cougars.
Fine. We can make it, we can make the presentation be about everyone on one condition.
What?
From now on, you shall no longer refer to me as Sebastian. Instead, I shall be known simply as Seabass. That's my rapper name.
Fine, whatever.
What's your rapper name?
Ellie.
It could use some work.
One of the things that makes being a Cougar so great is that being a part of CMS means you're part of a family.
That's right. We want everyone to feel included. And so we have lots of ways for, for our Cougars to be recognized and involved in our school.
There are, of course, longstanding traditions like the Honor Roll, the Virginia Reader's Choice Challenge, and the American Legion Essay Contest, including this year's winner, 7th grader Pearl Taddeau.
And for those who are more about sharing their skills, CMS has had some amazing accomplishments this year.
But don't take our word for it. We want you to hear it directly from some of our talented Cougars.
Outdoing interviews are Anna Biowares Baldwin and Matthew Sosna.
What's the word out there in the hallways, Matthew and Anna?
Thanks, Ellie. Cougars are flying high after our girls' basketball team became district champions last fall.
Here's Gabby Davis. Gabby, tell us what it meant to you to become district champions.
We're really proud. We worked together as a team and made it happen. This is something we'll run for the rest of our lives.
Amazing.
And the boys' basketball team just completed a perfect season and won the district championship. Isn't that right, Michael?
Yep, we came out on top and were able to join the girls as district champs.
That's Michael Street. Congratulations, Michael. Our athletes are sure having a great season this year.
It's true. Now let's move the showcase from the courts to the stage. This year, CMS put on a musical for the ages.
That's right. Beauty and the Beast had over 120 students band together to put on this mammoth production, which included a castle and a forum stage.
Let's talk to some of those students now.
What made the musical such a good experience?
We worked for months so we could sing, act, and dance with everything we had.
In all that applause, we had six sold-out performances. It was epic.
I was new to CMS this year, but I did the musical and I've made lifelong friends. It was the highlight of my year.
As two of the leads, Matthew and I can tell you that's absolutely true.
That's right. I played Maurice, Belle's father. And who are you again?
Belle.
Thought I recognized you.
The students are shining all over the place at CMS. Back to you, Sebastian.
Thanks, Anna. And those aren't the only places our students are being recognized for their abilities.
Our cheerleaders perform in monthly cheer camps.
We have band and choir students auditioning and being selected to perform at district level.
And students in SCCLA are traveling to Virginia Beach for the State Leadership Conference. There's a lot going on here.
And we don't just love our Cougars for what they can do. We also love them for who they are.
We've been celebrating Black History Month by highlighting prominent black historical figures, having a door decorating contest, and participating in an essay contest hosted by the NAACP.
Earlier this year, we had an entire week where we celebrated Hispanic Heritage with a Spear Week and showcased important historical figures in Hispanic culture on the jumbo TVs in the cafeteria.
And each quarter, we have students who are nominated by their teachers for displaying Cougar qualities.
Let's go back to Matthew and Anna.
Cougars are caring.
Cougars are motivated.
And Cougars are successful.
And here are just a few of the Cougars to be nominated by their teachers.
Tell us, what was it like to be nominated?
It means something to know that you don't have to be a big star to get noticed.
We can make a difference every day and get recognized for it.
Making a difference every day. That's how it should be. And you heard it from a Cougar. Back to you, Ellie.
Thanks, Matthew. Besides nominating students for their Cougar qualities, teachers have been working overtime to create opportunities for students to get involved.
Our ACE program has hosted Dot Day, where students created spin art that coincided with the book, "The Dot."
STEM Day, where students created and launched straw rockets.
And Book Talk with author Kwame Alexander.
And there's all the clubs.
We have an esports club with a newly renovated esports arena.
A global connections club, a robotics club.
A fencing club, a ninnin' club.
We even have a D&amp;D club.
We fight dragons.
There are so many ways to be included. It's mind-boggling.
And the best thing is, you don't even have to stay after school to be part of our Cougar family.
You can just show up on a normal day and be part of the excitement.
From Spear Weeks and school dances.
To pep rallies, including our new Cougar mural in the gym.
It's huge.
Being a Cougar is a way of life.
A way of life where everyone has a place and everyone belongs.
Come to CMS and we'll make you a Cougar in no time.
Thanks for watching.
Have a good night.
And don't forget to show your Cougar pride.
I just want to say thank you again for allowing us to present that. Our students are really excited to show the, the ways that they are included within the building and the, the opportunities that they do have at the middle school level. So thank you again.
All right, no discussion? And let's take a vote. All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 7-0. Presentation of the budget.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I thought I'd come down here and present in this fashion in case you had any questions about our final presentation of what we see as our FY25 budget. No surprises since our work session on the 26th, but I do have some information that I want to go over with you as to our level of confidence with respect to where we think we are with state revenue. Again, the caveat is, no, we do not have a budget yet. No, we do not have a Calc tool yet. But I, but I do have some, some good information on the, on that front. So just, again, I'm gonna go through this quickly. This is not news, new to you or to our audience, because it's very similar to what we presented on the 26th, as I said. On the 26th, we gave you some scenarios of what the governor's numbers look like in terms of how they would impact Culpeper County Public Schools, the House budget and the Senate budget. And the House was, you know, somewhere between too hot, too cold, and right in the middle. That's what we went for with, with the House budget. So as it turns out, based on this enrollment and our composite index, receiving an additional $4.5 million from the House is very, very much in line with the conferees' budget. So we're somewhere between lucky and good that we stay in touch and in tune with what's going on in Richmond. I would say this year, I probably called colleagues that are in the General Assembly, working the General Assembly, working the budget session, working the bills more than any year because we wanted to know where we stood with respect to this budget because they were so far apart, frankly, from the governor's proposal, all the way to the Senate proposal, which was, was a stark contrast. And also as what we lived last year and didn't get, receive a budget until October of the, of last year, which we didn't want to do that again. So with that, I will say the conferees' information came out Friday afternoon, just this past Friday afternoon, not to where, again, we have a Calc tool, but they, they present distribution sheets. From those distribution sheets, we estimate what we might be receiving from the conferees. Now, remember, after the conferees, if, if both houses approve that conferee budget, it goes to the governor, which he has line item veto power. And so there could be some things that, that the governor doesn't like in the budget. And so time will tell as to what that finally looks like. But at this point in time, in March, I, I feel as solid about this number from the General Assembly as a march that I've ever had, honestly, because we, we feel pretty good about this number in terms of both houses coming together, getting, and the conferees getting down to where can be very beneficial to Culpeper County Public Schools. So I'm gonna roll pretty quickly through this, not new. We're removing federal funds for ESER. I've got a slide that, that will discuss exactly what that looks like later on. In terms of benefits, we have zero increase. We are in a self-funded plan with our county counterparts and appreciate that collaboration. They're budgeting zero increase. We're budgeting zero increase as well. So this is kind of unheard-of thing, but we have zero increase. And we're very, very pleased with that in terms of the ratio of our paid claims to, to pay premiums. We're, we're in a great place with our last quarter of, of experience. So we're happy with that. We've talked about that. Also, there's a reduction in our VRS payment in terms of what the General Assembly has, or what the VRS Board has already recommended. So on this slide alone, we, we get to start with a savings going forward for next year. That savings coupled with some new revenue from the state is, is a good thing for us going forward in terms of the priorities in our, in, in your budget. So appreciate that. Compensation supplement, we did this last year, covered all of those increases last year, which ended up having salary increases averaging around 8% based on the study and getting our, our folks to the midpoint in, in this group. So we've mentioned this before. This is how we compare. This is what the teacher scale, again, we showed this scale because it's, a lot of folks that we, we have and our teachers, in, in terms of competitiveness, is one that we're most compared to. So this is what we're proposing for a teacher scale increase. As I will say, this is an increase of 5% to the base plus a step. And on the far right-hand side, you can see what that means to each group in terms of 5% plus a step. The conferees have in the budget 3%. The bonus is gone, but 3% each year in the biennial budget. So what we are proposing will be in excess of that, but we will have enough revenue from our savings and some of the hold harmless on sales tax, food, the food tax, that we feel very confident that what we have put to get, put before you, we will be able to realize with the other sources of revenue in addition to what the conferees have said on, on compensation increase. So some of those things look like this in terms of your teacher, teaching staff, your administrative staff with respect to having open ranges, other classified staff that, that are on steps, that would be custodians, bus drivers, and bus aides. And then a small adjustment to minimum wage and categorical stipends that when we have other stipends, coaches, et cetera, teacher leadership, things like that, we tie that back to beginning teacher pay. And as, as teacher pay goes up to a proposed just under $54,000, that moves the needle on all of those stipends, as, as you well know. Going forward, master's degree supplement, that was here. Sorry for going back and forth. One of the things that we, we did in increments from the Evergreen Study, we did a number of things full tilt, but that one, we were a bridge too far trying to make all the difference in our comparison group with our master's degree supplement for our teachers. We went from $3,000 this year to $3,500. This year, we're proposing going from $3,500 to $4,000. So that means that this depth scale plus a master's is another $4,000 of credible comp. So that, that's very, very significant and helps us with retention and recruitment, obviously. So back to those possible increases of 4.5 million. Some other increases are due to that late budget in October. We've talked about this. We, we didn't set this and freeze this. We actually removed these numbers from the budget because when the, the numbers came in in October saying that you had to use some of your funding that was allocated to us this year for All-In Virginia and this fiscal year, next fiscal year, and the following fiscal year, we pulled these out, literally the numbers. So this, kind of think of, in terms of unbudgeted positions that we add, well, this was budgeted positions that we took out to make the math work. So we need to add those back. So we'll have these positions. We've talked about this. Some unbudgeted positions that we did add over budget this year, 1.8 positions, want to retain those. And then new positions based on staff requests, total five positions, including fringes this year. Remember, including fringes means FICA, VRS, health insurance, the whole nine yards for full-time positions. Any place you need me to hit something, please let me know, Madam Chair, if anybody can jump in, that's not a problem. I know we're not in a work session format, but I'm happy to answer as we go. Other expenditures, I won't read that list to you, but the total instruction and technology expenses increase, 2.48, almost 2.5 million. Other expenses, increase our allotment for tuition assistance. Very, very popular program for us to be paying 90% of our tuition for our folks who are looking for, adding endorsements, adding degrees, and those kinds of things, which only serves our students better. So that's, that's a good deal. And creating a retiree sub-rate that is a little higher than our regular sub-rate and our degree sub-rate and our long-term sub-rate. So that would be good. And some other increases that you see there. In terms of ESER that comes out, I mentioned that slide earlier, 1.5 million. This is what it looks like, non-salary expenditures and salary positions that come out of ESER. But wait, some of those are coming back because the behavior interventionist, the first bullet under ESER completion, that was federally funded, that has been a very, very productive program for us. And therefore, we want that to be in our regular operating budget, of those four positions converted from ESER to local that we've talked about. Happy to answer any questions there. Some other expenditure information, you'll see this ends, will end up being a wash in terms of All-In Virginia money. This is from the, the funds that we received this year. And working with the county, these, these funds will be set aside earmarked coded so that these, it will be a budget within the budget, so to speak, to have the All-In Virginia Plan that was approved by the state that requires these positions in, in terms of the plan that we submitted. What that looks like in a quick summary is an increase of, net increase of 5.1 million with a revenue increase of 4.9 million. with a revenue increase of 4.9 million, meaning we're short $231,000. Not bad at all. Again, predicated on a funding gap of 231, that would be in the form of an ask of the locality, of the county. These are some examples that we've shared before of recent appropriations from 33, 33, 34, and up to 35 million, but this is less than a 1% increase over last year's approach from the county to us, largely based on a few savings measures, VRS, no increase to health insurance, and some significant lifting from the Commonwealth in terms of that new revenue that we talked about. That first slide that said new revenue would be about $4.5 million looks like this totally. And I know, what does that mean? What does that mean? That means a large portion of our budget, based on our composite index, comes from the state, and that's the $77.6 million. Again, it's an estimate, it's not in stone, but we feel pretty good about that number as it relates to, that's the House number in our estimates, that number is very, very, very comparable to what the conferees put out on Friday afternoon late, and then we received the distribution sheets just on Sunday. So, but we feel very, very confident in this. This compared to expenditures produces the balanced budget predicated on the increase request met by the county. And included in here, your approved CIP for FY '25. This process has gone through the Planning Commission, also shared with the county administrator who has presented preliminarily this information to the Board of Supervisors in terms of what we're looking at with our capital fund. Remember, our capital fund exists as we have excess revenue or underspend expenditures that goes in, that reverts to the county, but the county and our great relationship there allows us to put this back in our capital fund to fund these projects. Next step, have a date this Thursday to present this information with a few more slides in terms of detail of not a line item budget, but how that may look in terms of what the supervisors will see in the budget from the finance director from the county. But this is our last slide in terms of preparation for you to, at this point, deliberate, ask questions. Staff is here. Again, thank you to staff. I could go on and on and on about all the help getting this together, but appreciate it. You know it. You've heard it from me many times. But administration requests that you approve the budget as presented for FY '25. Happy to answer any questions you may have. That was fast, I know, but it was not a lot of new. Thank you.
Any questions?
Comments work, too?
Okay. It's almost unheard of, as you said, no increase in our insurance and the VRS reduction, which is amazing, and it certainly does help us to provide a lot of these additional, besides the salary increase, the additional opportunities for our staff with the increased master's degree stipend and tuition assistance and subrates and on and on. I just could go on as to how, with the assistance from the increase from the state, but these other adjustments certainly help us to have a very, I don't want to say rosy, but positive moving forward with the budget, and it's very good to see what we can do for our staff at this time. Thank you, and thank you to all the staff for pulling all this together.
Any other comments? Kelly? Ms. Pearson? Sorry.
Pearson? Thank you.
Got it.
Chairman Brown?
Dr. Brown, I wanted to thank you and the staff and Mr. Shomo for all your work on the budget. While I know school budgets at the school level, it's been very interesting and a good learning experience for me to be part of the budget at the school system level, and I want to commend you all for your thoroughness and, you know, your depth of knowledge with the budget, as well as creating and deciding on thoughtful priorities and helping with transparent decision-making, and it's been very good for me to have clear communications, you know, regarding historical school system budgets and the financial updates from the Virginia General Assembly, and then these documents that we can share with our constituents and the Board of Supervisors. So I just wanted to say thank you all for your help with that. As a new school board member, this has been very, very helpful. Thank you.
Other comments? Anybody? Go ahead, Ms. Baker.
I just think it's very familiar at this time that you go through those pages. You know, you could actually have gone a little quicker. We're used to seeing it, and I think it was a vision on your part and our staff that you went with, I'll call it the Goldilocks budget, not too hot, not too cold, right in the middle. I mean, we're either very, very lucky or a lot of you are very, very smart, so I think it's a great budget.
Anybody else?
I would just add before you vote, and it will not change this, the outcome for you, I would not think, but again, there are miles to go before we sleep. I mean, I could say that I feel really good about these March numbers, and things could get a little kaddi wampus in Richmond, we'll see, because, you know, the governor's not particularly happy with respect to at least two items, and that has to do with tax policy. And that trickles down to everything else in terms of funding across the Commonwealth, but particularly with K-12 funding. There is not an income tax by either House proposed or the conferees. There is not a sales tax, state sales tax increase that's proposed by the governor, but not in either House budget. So, you know, stay tuned in terms of where we end up, but again, as Ms. Baker said, I think we're right in the sweet spot of what's at least been proposed. It does comport well with where we think we will be with enrollment. The state does aim a little bit low when it comes to us with respect to their ADM number, but we know, we're consistent with our ADM. We see the growth, and we know we have growth coming, and we're working closely with our supervisor partners to help us deal with that growth that's coming. So, yeah, not a done deal by any means on the budget, but I feel really good about where we are at this point in time with these estimates. Thank you.
Other comments? Good. All right, then I will ask, is there a motion to approve the budget?
Same move. Second.
All right, that rolled along. Discussion. All right, time to vote. Since it is the budget, I will ask for a roll call vote. Will you ask, please?
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Burnett?
Yes.
Ms. Hudson?
Yes.
Ms. Pearson?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Superintendent's staff reports. Do you have any other updates for us, Dr. Brad?
No, ma'am, I do not.
All righty. Finance report, Mr. Shomo.
You were hoping to hear that, right? You were hoping to hear that.
This will be kind of brief, too, because we're waiting for the ever-ending March 31 First thing we'll look at is ADM. We're looking at, the big thing here is we've had some early graduates in January, and December does affect in these numbers here a little bit. So we're trying to pay attention to this, make sure that we're accounting for it, but that's what's drove us down as the kids have basically got an early graduation in these two months. The next one is the one we've been looking at, and like I said, we're tracking this. There's no real big changes here, and we're waiting for, basically, for the state, the big number there, the 64% state revenue number, is a caboose bill coming from the state that's kind of a little bit more exact than what we have, gives us an idea of where we're going to end up at. There's the same percentages that we're in there. And the good thing, the thing on this chart here, I'll call your attention, is instruction. The instruction expenditures have been pretty consistent month after month since we've been And here's the big thing here is these expenditures, they are tracking, kind of like, exactly like a previous year for as a budget. That's how consistent we have been trying to hold this. Right now, we've got 49% of the budget remaining to be spent, and last year this time, we're exactly 49% again. So we've been trying to hold it to see what's coming, and like I said, there's no guarantees, but we're tracking a normal year for us for expenditures and revenues. But as Dr. Brad said, that, you know, the big thing was, we get the budget from the state late, or late in the fall, and some of those numbers were adjusted out of us with All In money. So we're trying to massage that back into the budget and cover anything that will help be shortfall, but we're still working on that as we, and the big thing will be that caboose bill when we finally get it ginned up. And that's it. Any questions? Good. Thank you very much.
Dr. O'Brien, operations report, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Brad, I'm happy to give you the operations update for March. First, I'm going to start with facilities and maintenance. We did some clean-out repair work. As you see Johnny Wheeler there, one of our plumbers, and you could see how, I would say, crunky the clean-out looks to your right, the picture of it, it kind of rusted up a little bit. We did some wire brushing on it, but eventually it started to leak, so they had to replace it, and that's what the results of his work was. It's much better looking. We did have to remove a tree that fell at Emerald Hill onto the fence. We've actually had a couple trees today we had to go out and take care of as well. You know, when it gets windy in Culpeper, a lot of trees start to come down. And AgroScience Building, there's a lot of good work going on there. They put some siding on part of it. They still need some more to do, and you can see what the interior looks like. So that project is going to be nearing completion rather soon. And we added an accessibility ramp at Sycamore Park and added a landing to it, the concrete pad at the bottom, so that that is accessible for a student to get to the playground where previously they had to go around the long way. The Eastern View classrooms, they did the flooring. As you can see, the LVT that's on the bottom, those are starting to look about done. They're just doing a couple little cleanup items. You could see kind of in the back there, that's that additional storage that's part of the silo, if you know Eastern View. If you get a chance and you're there, I'm sure Dr. Boff would be happy to show you what those look like. But that's what those silos look like on the interior. That's the adapted curriculum classroom. You can see the kitchenette's about done. They're still waiting to get the stove in itself and make sure that they have the venting for the stove in place, too. And other ticket counts we have up there, they completed 384. They did a touch the truck activity at AG Richardson, so what I like to call the littles got to go up and see what some of these vehicles are like, including our lift truck. So they got a lot of opportunities to see some pretty cool stuff. And they assembled a greenhouse at Farmington. Food service, we were up, which is always a plus. 202,000 meals were served in February. We did have an additional day because it was leap year, but that still is definitely in the positive for us. The harvest of the month was Parmesan bacon kale. I guess the bacon does help kale. It always does. And that was done at Emerald Hill, and I guess it's been going very well. Maddie Grady, I'm sorry, Mallory Grady is the one who's been helping us on that front. And technology, you can see some of our statistics for that, about 430 phone calls. They closed about 643 tickets, a lot of Chromebook repairs. They also added a help desk software that they're working on with the Family Resource Center, just a better way for them to manage their incoming phone calls and requests from the community, as well as our security technician has been involved in a lot of the school security walks with Dr. Halk and the principals as well. Transportation, I always put this up, too. Again, we are still hiring aides, so if you know any folks out there interested in being a bus aide, we're certainly looking to add additional bus aides moving forward. And here's our stop-arm violations. You can see in December, we had 250 citations. We're actually down a little bit for January to 224 citations. So maybe the message is getting across, we're always, it's positive to see that start to come down a little bit. And then, again, really hasn't changed a whole lot in terms of where the locations of these violations are occurring. We know North Main Street in particular, where you have the four lane and the turn lane in the center, people tend to miss that. Other items, we routed 6,272 students. Again, it's spring sports has come, so we start to lose a couple of our riders as they stay after school for sports. Subfinder went up just a little bit. We did replace the LMUs in a lot of our buses to help improve our GPS connectivity because there were some issues with the actual device that talks to Synovia, that talks to Stop Finder, and we're hoping that'll help address some of the issues I know you brought to our attention. May 8th, we had an in-service where we covered a lot of topics. We had a presentation from our sped department, as well as a few guest speakers, and we reviewed procedures again and did something called Smoke Out the Bus, where the drivers got to experience what it's like to be a student when you have to evacuate the bus, and a great time was had by all, maybe, but at least one thing, they certainly get a better perspective of, it's one thing to be the driver and you have to get kids off the bus, it's another thing to be a student having to get off the bus as well. Any questions? I know I went quick.
Any questions?
I have a question. Okay. I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The Parmesan kale or bacon kale?
Bacon Parmesan kale.
Has that already been served or is coming up?
I think it's coming up this month. I'm not sure. Emerald Hill, do you know?
Okay.
It's coming up.
I'm dying to hear how that goes over.
I am, too. I'm curious.
Sounds great to me.
I might sneak up that day, just give it a try.
Have to come out. Let me know when it is.
All right, Ms. Hudson.
The storage building at EV in the back?
Yes, ma'am.
Is a house. It's huge.
It is huge.
It is huge. So in it, the tractor, what else is going in it?
Oh, well, that's a good question.
Anything and everything?
It's, I call it's an agroscience storage, so whatever they need to put in there, they'll put in there.
Okay.
So I would assume the tractor and any other equipment that they think warrants being in there.
Okay, it's huge.
Yeah.
Okay, then I have a question about the stop-arm tickets. Why are we having so few out of the numbers that are reviewed that are approved? I mean, less than half, and then in January, it was even smaller number approved for?
Well, the approval rate, you see 100, in December, 100 were approved, and the approval rate was 40%. And then in January, 95 were approved, but that approval rate was 42.4%.
Right.
We kind of, on the average of what's been explained to me by Bus Patrol, the folks who do it and submit it, is that's about accurate. You normally are at about 50%, so anywhere between 40 and 50% seems to be about average for the state of Virginia, because a lot of times, it's our law enforcement, it's our deputies that are reviewing the film, that are looking at it, and they make the determination if they see that it really does warrant sending a citation or actually filing it. So that's why we're always kind of cautious about talking too much about it, because that's a law enforcement decision about how to pursue it.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
If I may add to that, though?
Yes, sir.
Our company tells us it's very consistent percentage-wise with what the other school divisions that they're working with.
Okay.
Because, remember, that stop-arm deploys and it sends that file to the company, and it may send files that it triggers a citation because something passed that camera. And is there enough in that camera to identify the vehicle, the driver, the time of day, was it a parking area? Lots of factors. So then, the human element is that back in our county, our law enforcement and a consistent team of deputies are looking at that, saying, yes, yes, no, yes, yes, no. And they've been great partners in this, and, yeah, I think that they will always get more based on what that data file looks like than actually, okay, this, we're going to connect this information and thus mail the citation. Because remember, that is a civil fine, people have to pay it, but also, for due process, folks can go to court and challenge it. They don't, they don't take, they don't come to us, they don't go to Stop Arm, Stop Finder, excuse me, they, Bus Patrol, one more time, it's Bus Patrol. They would go to court and basically say, what is law enforcement seeing in this? But we're pleased with the system in that we're thinking that it's improving behavior. We're not there yet. As you've heard me here, make pleas for people to stop passing. We're not there yet, as you've heard me here, make pleas for people to stop passing buses that have an extended stop-arm out, but we're not quite there yet, but we'll keep it going. Thank you for your question.
Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none. We will go on to board member comments. Thank you, Dr. O'Brien. We will start with Mrs. Pearson.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. As always, thank you, Dr. Braz and the staff, for your monthly reports. They're always very helpful, and Mr. Blackburn and I enjoyed seeing all the great activities for the middle school students, especially the wide variety of clubs. That was, that was great. Thank you. I know all of you are going to mention some of the great activities that we've been attending. Emerald Hill STEM Night was outstanding. I really enjoyed Dr. Gelbert and your staff having such good opportunities for the kids to interact with the activities in a small environment, and also getting to meet the students who did the automatic dog waterer and talking with them about their scientific process and the scientific method and how they adjusted their experiment. It was great in the production video. Thank you for doing that. That was a great segue into the STEAM weekend, which I know a lot of you are going to talk about, too. We had outstanding participation at the art show. Our visual arts teachers, again, were magnificent with their collaboration. And if you did not get a chance to come out to the art show, we had art represented from grades pre-K all the way up through 12. Grades nine through 12 were judged, several of us were judges, and every year, we're just amazed at the talent of our students and the supportive environment for the visual arts here in Culpeper. And the rain didn't dampen the excitement, and when you walked right down the hill to the Maker Energy Fair, that's the first time I had been to that event, because I'd previously had some other commitments, and it was just overwhelming, in a good way, because there were so many parents and grandparents and extended family members there with their small children, and there was something for everyone to do, from making a cupcake to making an Easter basket, to string art, to robotics. It was just great. And I wanted to commend our fellow school board members for taking the time to also go and be out and about and see you all there. It really makes a difference when we show that we are interested in our students' activities and that we put forth a positive face for Culpeper County Public Schools. I wanted to say thank you for being out and about with me. It was great.
Ms. Burnett?
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Yeah, you, you're so thorough with your comments. I don't know how to top that, but I just wanted to say that I thoroughly enjoyed Fabletown at CMS. The Makers Energy Fair, that was the first time I believe I was in attendance, but I don't think I've ever seen so many happy families go through an event such as that, and just having so many things for the kids to do. The cosmetology also had, I think, nails and hair and the fairy hair, yeah. And they were making baskets for Easter. They were just so many, the robots with the, that would follow the designs the kids would make, just so many interactive items. And I was trying to think, there was something, we had some representatives from the machinist school, we had representatives from Dog Run, pardon?
Pathways.
Pathways, yes, machinist school. And just very informative, and I had the opportunity to speak to one of our students who was helping with the Pathways machinist area, and she should be our spokesperson for our STEAM nights and Makers Fairs, because she said that she got into the CTEC program early due to attending one of our Maker Energy Fairs, and she was so excited by the cybersecurity section that she actually got in, and she was, I think, in eighth grade, and she got into the program a year earlier than most normally do. So that was great, to be able to talk to those who this has impacted in such a wonderful way. I saw a teacher, too, that was an excellent representative for Black History Month and bringing that alive for our students. She wore a different person in history's attire every day of Black History Month, and I was so impressed with her. Just, that's the kind of teachers that we have in Culpeper. There she is. Thank you. I wanted to say thank you so much. That was very impressive. Thank you very much. I know that the kids were, it just brings it alive, history alive for us all. Thank you. And the countywide art show was amazing, and I followed some families through that, and they were just so happy to share their creations, and families so proud of their students, and there was some amazing work. We have some extremely talented students. Let's see, what else we have here? So much, but just thank you all so much for what you do and being a part of our community and making school happen, but also being such an asset to our community as a whole. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Ms. Baker?
I think everything has been said, but thank you to everyone for everything they do. And I do know the STEAM night at Emerald Hill was terrific, and I also attended one at Farmington, and that was also wonderful. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Well, I wanted to start speaking to Mr. Blackburn, and sorry that I didn't say something right away, but I was pretty blown away by, I think it takes a special team to work with middle schoolers, and just to see the, you know, you helping them and your team helping them find their spark and what they do well. And from arts to sports to academics to character, you covered it all, and the presentation was fantastic. I loved having the kids do that, so it was really good. Should have said, I was just kind of blown away, honestly, and just trying to process all of it, but thank you for that. And then, of course, the STEAM weekend was great. I don't need to say anything else about it, but I just appreciate all that we have going on in our division and because of you all. Thank you.
Mrs. Desalay?
Good evening. I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail either, but I will say that I think the Maker Energy Fair is a great name, because there was so much energy the whole week, you know, starting in Emerald Hill. I was blessed to be able to go there and participate with some of the board members. We have the pictures to prove it, right? And the weekend was just wonderful, and it, when I went home, I was talking to my husband, and the thing that I said to him, it was just such a cool community event, and it just, the parents, the staff that was there, there were so many kids that were so excited, giving their presentations and helping other kids do things, and the fairy hair and all of that, and the cosmetology was just the cutest thing I've seen in a really long time. And thank you all. It was just a great community event, and it just, I think it epitomizes what, you know, Culpeper schools are in the community, and it makes me really proud. Thank you.
Mrs. Hudson?
Thank you. The Maker Energy Fair is, of course, helped with, sponsored by Career Partners, and I want to thank Career Partners for all their support of that. And it's interesting to talk to alumni who have, did not have the opportunity to go through that when they were in school, and they're like, man, I wish I'd had that. And it's a, it's a great opportunity for our kids and our families, and very enjoyable. I also want to just summarize what we saw here tonight with all of these students who are being recognized. It's due to the hard work of all of our staff, our coaches, our teachers, and staff members who help these students to achieve their dreams, their goals, as they go through high school. And your work is greatly appreciated, and it's the time of year where we all get to smile and show the stars that we have in our system, and very humbled and thrilled to see those kids up here and everywhere, not just here on our nights, but shining and sharing their achievements. Thank you.
I would say exactly what everybody else has said and save you a couple minutes on that, but I would like to say, give a little clarification, the building for Ag is not exactly huge, and it is there because their Ag program is so well-taken as it is at CCHS, but CCHS had more space for it. And so we have a teacher teaching out of a smaller area that was having to store a tractor in the wrong place. So, yes, we needed to have some kind of space for them to have their materials, and while it looks large right now, I assure you, once you walk in, it will not look quite that large, because it will probably be full of things. So I just want to kind of throw that out, that we haven't built the Taj Mahal for the Ag department at Eastern View, although I might, but, you know, no. So with that, I'd like to thank all of my board members and report that the committee's individual reports are on the website. Membership for February of 2024 is there. Appreciation Week for volunteers is the 22nd of April through the 26th of April. The Administrative Professionals Appreciation Week is April 22nd through the 26th also. The Capital Planning Committee Member Meeting is listed, as is the Admin Committee. Our next work session is March 25th at CCHS. Finance Committee will be meeting again at our regular meeting on April 8th, as will the regular board meeting be on April 8th. So now, we need to have a motion to go into closed session.
Ms. Hudson?
I move that the school board convene a closed session at 7:21 to consider the following personnel matters pursuant to the Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A1. The appointment of classified personnel, the separation of certified personnel, the separation of classified personnel, and the approval of substitute teachers for 2023, 2024.
Second? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Seven oh, we will take a five-minute break and then convene in closed session.